Okay, we'll get started. It's, we usually get a knock on the door, but not this evening. Welcome. This is the August 25th, 2021 Meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see a full house. Special welcome also to Councilwoman Brandy Sullivan, who's sitting in for Marine tonight. And next to Mike is Todd Drage from the Engineering Department. Here to answer any questions that any of you might have as we proceed this evening. So, busy agenda. We'll get right to it. First item is approval of the August 11th, 2021 minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, deletions? Okay. Would somebody like to move to approve?
Move to approve.
And seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. Next item is our public comment period. If any of you would like to address the commission for matters that are not before the commission this evening, but if anybody would like to come forward, we devote 15 minutes of the meeting to public comment. So, not seeing anybody come. Oh, yes. Please come up.
I just didn't want to be first.
Now, this is not for the public meeting. This is general comments for issues not on the agenda tonight.
I believe so. They're general.
Okay, but it doesn't relate to the public hearing?
Let me get through the first two sentences and we'll find out.
Okay.
But I appreciate your indulgence. So, my name is Steve Cadlec. I live in the city of Moscow at 1109 Slonikher Drive. And there was a gathering of some neighbors and their comments and, and concerns were then compiled by Ann Hostie.
Okay, that is going to be a part of the agenda tonight, so.
I don't believe so. If you indulge two sentences, just the introduction, you may said, "I'd like to share some very general remarks about planning in Leetaw County. This is in particular to the proposition before you tonight. It's about Moscow's comprehensive plan. Every local government in Idaho is required to adopt one. Moscow's plan is," and I quote, "a statement of the community's values and policies to guide the long-range physical development of the city and its area of city impact. It's a foundation for making decisions. I know you know this. Still, it feels like new developments are popping up all over with little respect for current and future residents' needs and services. Basic needs such as water, services like police and fire. For instance, we don't really know how long the water will last in our major aquifer. Conservation efforts by current residents will only go so far in the face of increased use. The city is guaranteeing water before it has a guaranteed water source. It is, as I heard recently, like writing a check before there's money in the bank. Yes, if you build it, they will come. But when they come, then what? Will the city be ready? Will we have adequate roads, wastewater disposal, schools, and the rest? Do we know specifically how many housing units have already been approved in the past five years? We need to think through the cumulative consequences of our decisions and not take a piecemeal approach to development. Developers take it piecemeal. They bundle their proposals and divide large projects into phases. Phase one is approved, so the next phase is approved, and the next. It's a slam dunk. I respectfully request that we hold each proposal to the same standard, Moscow's comprehensive plan. If this takes more time, so be it. Wherever a specific proposal does not hold to Moscow's plan, there must be conditions. That's what the plan means when it calls on us to treat all proposals equally and fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with general comments? Okay, we will move then to the next item on the agenda, which is our public hearing. And before we start the public hearing, Mike Ray will give us a presentation on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So, before you tonight, we have a public hearing for the Woodbury Development. There's a comprehensive planned land use designation, zoning designation, preliminary subdivision plat, and plan unit development associated with the request before you tonight. Pointer doesn't appear to be working, but I think we can do without. So, this is the property highlighted in red at the center of your screen, 21.7 acres in size. You can see the current city limits boundary with the purple dash line here to the west and to the south. Slonikher Drive, Blackwood subdivision is directly to the south here. Peekaboo Estates subdivision, which is a recent subdivision with Lanny Drive here as well. Orchard Avenue here to the west, Arborcrest Road to the northwest, and Trail Road to the north. Primarily surrounded by agricultural land that's owned by the Trail family to the west, north, and east. So, the applicant is Wince and Company, and they're proposing four actions for 21.73 acre property. Proposed to be annexed into the city of Moscow, generally located north of Slonikher Drive, east of Arborcrest Road, and south of Trail Road. Comp plan land use designation is proposed. It's currently auto-urban residential, and it's proposed to be a combination of auto-urban residential and suburban commercial. Zoning designation from the Ag Forest to a combination of the moderate-density, single-family residential, which is the R2 zone, as well as the neighborhood business zone. And then, of course, prior to annexation, planning and zoning commissions required to review the subject property and provide city council with a recommendation regarding the appropriate future land use designation and zoning designations to be applied upon annexation of the property. So, that won't be before the commission tonight as far as the annexation, just the proper comp plan and zoning designations to be applied. Brings us to the Woodbury subdivision and plan unit development proposal. 21.73 acres again. Proposed to have 74 lots ranging from 3,794 square feet to 17,973 square feet in size. Neighborhood business zone is proposed to have seven lots, and the R2 zone is proposed to have 67 single-family lots within that area. So, just a closer view of the subject property here. I would note that Yeoman's Lane does exist there to the east as well. Current comprehensive plan land use designation is auto-urban residential. Pretty much all the surrounding properties are within the auto-urban residential designation. As you can see, proposing to retain that designation, but for the specific area proposed to be rezoned to the neighborhood business, I'd be designating that as suburban commercial. So, looking at the 2019 comprehensive plan, which is recently updated. Auto-urban residential designated areas are intended to contain predominantly single-family detached homes on lots ranging between 7,000 to 11,000 square feet in size. More isolated typically from surrounding uses, which may require residents to rely more on automobile transportation. Generally anticipated to be developed to load moderate-density residential uses between three to six units per acre. It could also include a mixture of detached, single-family, twin home, town home, and residential dwellings. And then it points to the appropriate zoning designations, which would be the R1, R2, or R3 zones in order to include a mixture of attached and detached dwellings where appropriate. Looking at suburban commercial, it's really intended to provide local neighborhood commercial services in a manner that is compatible with the residential neighborhood environment. Appropriate for this designation as far as the lands, which include areas close proximity to higher-density residential development and intersections of designated collector arterial streets near residential development. Developments within these designated areas should include additional building scale and design standards. And then it points to the neighborhood business zone as being the most appropriate zone. So, looking at the zoning configuration of the area, the subject property is currently zoned Ag Forest within the area city impact, as well as the remainder of the Trail property within the Ag Forest zone as well. Property within the city limits boundary really ranges, so directly to the south of the Blackwood Edition, as well as Peekaboo Estates, that's the R1 zoning district. You have certain segments of Farm Ranch that were probably previously in the county and subsequently annexed into the city, and we have remnant designations there. There are also suburban residential with Arborcrest, and then other pockets of R2. Highland Drive area to the west of Orchard Avenue is currently within the R2 designation. Now, the proposed rezone is to the R2, moderate-density, single-family residential. And then you can see the pocket of neighborhood business there at the northwest corner. Taking a look at R2 zone, it's a moderate-density residential zone appropriate where the following circumstances are present. Single-family dwellings predominate the area. Terrain's not harshly irregular, and smaller lot sizes can be accommodated without extensive earthwork. Utilities and other public facilities are adequate for the densities allowed. Existing lot development patterns and policies embodied in the comprehensive plan will also guide application of the zoning district. And looking at the permitted uses within the R2, it's primarily a, a single-family zone. Does include some market and community gardens, so the urban agriculture uses. Group childcare facilities and public parks and recreation facilities are also permitted. Minimum lot size in that zone is 7,000 square feet. Minimum lot width is 60 feet. Although if, for those lots that abut an alley, you're allowed to go down to 50 feet. Setback requirements, front yards 20, side yards are five, but both sides must equal 15. Street-side yards are 15 feet, and the rear yard is 20 feet. Brings us to the neighborhood business zone. Appropriately applied in the following circumstances. Where local commercial facilities will serve the everyday needs of a limited neighborhood area. Where activity levels associated with small-scale office development can be accommodated or tolerated by surrounding land uses and existing public services. Where a neighborhood core is identified, which is easily accessible by pedestrian or vehicular circulation. And where such commercial development will result in minimal interference with residential uses in the vicinity of the neighborhood business zone. The range of uses within the, the neighborhood business zone. A wide range of residential uses, all as long as they're above or behind a commercial use on the property. Community market gardens, fitness centers, veterinary services, professional offices, restaurants, coffee espresso stands, childcare facilities, community neighborhood centers, healthcare services, museum and art galleries, religious facilities, retail personal services, off-street parking areas, and bed and breakfast ends. Minimum lot size is distinguished, so single-family, two-family, multifamily dwellings is 5,000 square feet or 800 square feet per dwelling unit, whichever is greater. Townhouses are 1,800 square feet. Twin home dwellings are 2,250. And then looking at the lot width for single, two, and multifamily is 50. Townhouses require 18, and twin homes are 25. Setback requirements, front yard's going to be 20, side 10, street-side 10, and rear is 10. 20, excuse me. Brings us to Woodbury preliminary plat. So, the Woodbury subdivision. 21.73 acres, 74 lots ranging from 3,794 to 17,973 square feet in size. Of course, neighborhood business has seven, and R2 has 67. The applicant has proposed a PUD to coincide with a preliminary plat and is requesting numerous zoning code deviations to accommodate more of a master-planned subdivision that's being developed in a new urbanist-style design. Entire property owner wishes to develop is approximately 82 acres in size. Extends from Slonikher to the south, Arborcrest to the west, and Trail to the north, and slightly to the east of Yeoman's to the east. The first phase, which is before you tonight, is 21.73 acres of that 82 acres, and is proposed to be annexed at this time. So, that brings us to the subdivision plat proposal. You can see the, the larger master-planned area extending from Arborcrest, Trail Road, Yeoman's to the east, and Slonikher here to the south. This would be the entire 82 acres. And this is the portion that's before you tonight with just phase one of the subdivision. Can see Slonikher would extend up in the northerly direction. It's more of an oval-shaped development pattern. You do have crossroads here. This would be another public road extending up from Slonikher. You would have various other public roads that would extend through the development and a series of private roads as well. So, just a closer view of that same area. Really an interconnected trail system as well. So, you can see a lot of the proposed lots will front on common green areas. So, I believe these are the cottage lots here, and we'll go through that in more detail. But pretty extensive open space trail network through the proposed subdivision. Have a stormwater detention pond here in the southwest corner, where all the stormwater runoff will be directed to and then conveyed. Slonikher obviously extending up into the center park area. And so, this is a center park that proposed to be a center-green, open-space area. We're really the center of the development. All these lots are proposed to be rear-loaded. At least, the majority of those are. There are a number of lots here, the larger lots that transition from some of the larger lots within Blackwood Edition. Those are the only lots within this phase that are proposed to be front-loaded. Just another portion of the plat, and we'll discuss this a little bit later. But on the private streets that are being proposed here, there won't be any proposed on-street parking. So, the applicant's dedicated 25 of these off-street parking spaces that will be perpendicular to the private streets. You can see at various locations throughout the development. Slonikher has on-street parking on both sides of the street, and that'll continue. And then we got Village Way, which extends here, and that's our 28-foot-wide street section, which includes parking on one side of the street. This is moving north in the subdivision. Can see some of those common green areas here. And then this is the center park, green space there. So, the applicant's proposing the master-planned community that include a number of small neighborhoods that are linked by a combination of city and private streets. Community would include rear-loaded garages, front porches, tree-lined streets, and a walkway system that will connect to a number of small linear parks. Each home in the sub, in the neighborhood is proposed to be unique, but also have the same architectural style throughout. There's really four types of lots that are being proposed here. The first is the village, and those are really the surround the center park and include the proposed neighborhood business zone lots. Moving out, you have the cottage lots, which are clustered in neighborhoods that surround the village center. And then moving out from there are the Fort Russell lots, which are a little bit larger in size, and those surround the cottage neighborhoods. And lastly, you have the garden lots, which are the largest, and those are located on the perimeter of the development. Help to provide for a transition from the existing neighborhoods. And those are the only lots that are not proposed to have rear access via private street. So, this brings us to the PUD site plan. And so, you can see some various colors there. Those all represent the various lots. And so, in this, in the village center, you can see a ledge in there. So, the neighborhood business lots surrounding the center end up coming out and transitioning into the cottage lots that usually front the common green areas. And these will be duplicated in, in some of the other phases. Can see cottage lots would be right here in front of the green areas. And then there's four of these micro neighborhoods as you transition around to the future phases. But for this proposed first phase, you'll just have one of, of these cottage neighborhoods proposed. Then you have transitioning to the Fort Russell lots. Those are the lots that are in the lighter shade of blue on your screen. And then lastly, the garden lots, which are the gold color, primarily located adjacent to Slonikher. So, at the center of the development, it's an open-space island being referred to as Center Park. Smallest residential lots in the development, which include the seven neighborhood business lots surround the park. And the lots are intended to face Center Park and have private street at the rear, which provides vehicular access, fire department access, and refuse collection. And looking at the average size is 4,800 square feet for those village lots. And then all the neighborhood business lots, or all the neighborhood business uses are proposed to be allowed on the village lots that are zoned neighborhood business. Moving on to the cottage lots, the applicant's referring to all these lots clusters as micro neighborhoods. And all lots proposed to face a center-green space with walking pass with vehicular access at the rear via private streets. And then each home within the cottage neighborhoods proposed to be unique, but still file, follow the style of the neighborhood. And then the average lot size is, is similar to the village, is 4,800 square feet in size. And just to give you an idea, we pointed those out earlier, but it'd be the, really the pinkish color here, reddish color in the center. Now, these are the home plans that were provided, elevations of the cottage lots. So, really, story and a half. Little over 1,100 square feet of floor area. It's a little faint, but you can see the kitchen area, living area. There's an office. Two bathrooms, master bedroom, as well as a second bedroom. Really a single-level floor plan with a front porch. Moving on to the Fort Russell lots, the, the lots that surround the cottage core. So, they're larger lots, and they're referred to Fort Russell because of their similarity to the existing Fort Russell neighborhood in Moscow in regards to the lot size, tree-lined streets, and rear alley access. The average lot size here is a little bit larger, 6,600 square feet with dimensions of 60 by 110 on average. Larger lot sizes accommodate homes which are larger than the cottage homes. And then example building plans depict an architectural design that is similar in appearance to homes that would exist in Fort Russell. And once again, those are the light blue color shown on your screen there. Lot of access on the, on the public streets, so Village Way and Slonikher Drive. These are the example conceptual images submitted for the Fort Russell. You can see the floor plan here, a little bit larger than the cottage. So, we still have dining, kitchen, living in the front, and transitioning to master bedroom, master bath, some laundry rooms, walk-in closets, and an outside porch with an additional half-story on the top. Garden lots are at the perimeter of the development, where adjacent to the existing neighborhoods. Most of those garden lots will have garage access directly from the street that they front, so setbacks are greater. Applicants intending to provide a transition from existing neighborhoods at the edge of the proposed subdivision all the way through Fort Russell cottage and village neighborhoods to the core. Average lot size of those garden lots, 16,500 square feet. So, about a third of an acre with dimensions of 110 feet by 150 feet. And once again, those are going to be more of the goldish color, primarily located along Slonikher Drive here. So, the example elevations for the garden lots, for the homes to be built. And then the floor plan includes a two-car garage, living room, kitchen, pantry, dining area, office den, master bedroom area, bathroom, and additional living space upstairs. About 3,400 square feet in size for the floor plan. And then the proposed, this kind of gives you an idea of the, the lot sizes that are being proposed. So, ranging from cottage to garden. And then the setbacks are being proposed as part of this PUD. So, that's another request or deviations between the current setbacks of R2, just to push, you know, more urban, new urbanist style. So, we have seven feet proposed in the front, seven feet in the rear, five feet a minimum on the sides, and that's for the village center cottage, as well as the Fort Russell lots. And then looking at the, the garden lots here, bottom of your screen, seven feet on the side, 10 feet in the front and the rear. Have a table that was included in your packet that goes through, a similar table that's in our zoning code that goes, you know, has bulk and dimensional standards. So, all the setbacks that are listed, average lot size, uses that are permitted, the number of off-street parking spaces, and then encroachments. And so, it's nice to be able to go back and reference this. Moving on to encroachments, so this is similar to what we allow in our zoning code. The applicant's proposing to allow architectural projections such as bay windows, porches, and eaves to be able to encroach three feet into the front and street-side setbacks. Actually, our zoning code currently permits four feet, four-foot encroachment, but the applicant's requesting one foot less than that. Fences, front yard fence is limited to 42 inches in height and setback 18 inches from the sidewalk. Hedges in the front setback will, shall not exceed 48 inches in height, and the fences and walls shall be consistent with the architectural style of the house. Rear and side yard fences are encouraged for privacy, shall not exceed six feet in height. Fences over 48 inches shall be required to have 50% opacity when, which can be softened with vines and plantings. And gates and arbors are permitted, and hedges on the side and rear of the lots are unrestricted. Looking at the PUD base density, R2 zone is 4.8 dwelling units per acre. Neighborhood business is 24 dwelling units per acre. Calculating what the base density of the proposed PUD is, is 3.44 units per acre. So, no density bonuses are required as part of this PUD subdivision. Parking requirements, so on-street parking is provided on both sides of Slonikher Street, like we previously discussed, and one side of Village Way. Proposed private streets do not contain on-street parking, but the applicant's proposing to provide 25 public off-street parking spaces that would be dispersed throughout the subdivision adjacent to the private streets. Each lot within the proposed subdivision will provide a minimum of two off-street parking spaces dispersed either between a garage or driveway. And this is our standard in the zoning code is two for every single-family dwelling, so it's consistent with that. Accessory dwelling units are proposed to be permitted so long as setbacks can be met. Village cottage and Fort Russell lots may be placed above a one, two, or three-car garage or carport. A maximum floor area of 750 square feet. And the garden lots may be placed above a garage or carport or be independent detached on the lot. Maximum floor area is 1,200 square feet in size. So, these are, standards are a little bit different than our standards for ADUs in the code. But every residential zone in Moscow permits ADUs to be constructed. So, it wouldn't be dissimilar from any other zone. Brings us to the, our thoroughfare plan with the comprehensive plan. So, this is where we, we note future extensions of roadways, as well as current classifications of roadways. A little hard to see with the names on there, so I've kind of flashed back and forth. But we've got Mountain View Road. You can see at the bottom of your screen there. Makes a 90-degree, heads past Slonikher and out to Mountain View Park, and then heads due north there. Currently classified it as a minor arterial, so that's really our highest classification other than state highways that go through town. Lanny is a collector classification right now. So, you can see, currently connects from Orchard Avenue here, which is north-south. That's a collector classification. Lanny's a, a collector classification. And then we, the dash lines represent future roadway alignments. And so, typically that happens when properties are developed. They have to account for these roadways that are shown within the thoroughfare plan and incorporate that into their subdivision to be able to connect and provide for the long-term transportation needs of the community. And so, that's what you're seeing there, ends up connecting to Derby Road intersection with Mountain View. You also see Trail Road, which is proposed to be a, a minor arterial as well. So, Slonikher is constructed to a prior street standard than we currently have. It's a 34-foot-wide paved section, so our, our current standard for parking on both sides of the street now is 36-foot wide. So, it's just two feet short from what the current standard is. There's two 10-foot travel lanes, curb gutter, treelawn, sidewalks on both sides of the street, as well as parking on both sides. The applicant's proposing to continue the older street section on Slonikher Drive through the proposed subdivision and, but reduce the treelawn width from eight and a half feet to seven feet. Our Assistant Parks and Recreation Director, David Schott, has reviewed the proposed seven-foot width of treelawn and determined that according with the arboricultural specifications and standards, a seven-foot-wide treelawn sufficient for large-class trees, which you typically see planted in the treelons of the public right-of-way. So, he has no concerns with that reduction from eight and a half to seven feet. And this is the standard that existed at the time, and you can see the only modification would be the reduction from eight and a half to seven feet for the treelawn area. There is an emergency secondary access and construction entrance that's proposed to be extended to the proposed subdivision from Trail Road to the north. Per fire code requirements, it needs to be at least 20 feet in width and all-weather driving surface and be required for the secondary access road. Future phases, the entire development are planned to provide connections to Arborcrest, Trail Road, and Yeoman's Lane. Village Way is a 28-foot-wide paved street with two 10-foot travel lanes, curb gutter, treelons, and sidewalks on both sides of the street. For our 28-foot-wide street section, parking is only permitted on one side of the street. And the applicant, consistent with Slonikher proposal, is, is proposing And the applicant, consistent with Sloniker proposal, is, is proposing to reduce the treelawn width from ten to seven feet in that section. And so you can see, this is the twenty-eight-foot wide section, two travel lanes, and the parking, parallel parking on one side of the street. And then we currently have ten-foot treelawn widths before you reach the five-foot sidewalk on either side, so it'd be the same request here with a reduction from ten to seven for the treelons. Looking at the private street system, Midsummer, Picatinny, might mess this one up, Le Petit, Maison's. Southwick, Rosemary and Cozy Court, maintained by a homeowners association, so these are private streets, the city would not maintain. These, current private street standard is a twenty-foot wide paved roadway with curbing on one, on both sides of the street. The applicant's proposing an alternative design which would function and be designed similarly to a public alley standard. It's really serving that purpose to provide that rear access to a lot of the lots that front, either the green spaces or public roads. So that would include a sixteen-foot wide paved roadway, two-foot gravel shoulders on both sides of the street. The private streets provide primary vehicular access to many of the lots within the subdivision, also serve as emergency services access. Our fire marshal has reviewed the private streets for sufficient access, and applicant has modeled the private street intersections for sufficient fire truck turning radiuses. And there's no concern from the fire marshal there. This is the private street section that the applicant submitted. You can see on the edges there, we got franchise utility easements with joint utility trenches. We'll likely have some city utilities that will run down the private streets, obviously storm sewer, could potentially have sanitary or water. Really just depends on the layout and whether or not there's public streets or, or green spaces that could be used as those, for those. Essentially have the sixteen-foot wide pavement section and the two-foot gravel shoulders on either side, and the inverted crown draining to the storm. There are two one-way streets. The confluence of Sloniker Drive and Village Way at the center park are proposed to be one-way around the center park. And then Ashton Circle in the southwest of the subdivisions proposed to be one-way, heading in the easterly direction, eventually intersecting with Sloniker Drive. Currently don't have a, a one-way street standard within our street standards, so the applicant's proposing a standard which would include a twelve-foot wide travel lane, eight-foot wide lane for on-street parallel parking on one side of the street, seven-foot treelawn, five-foot sidewalk on one side, and then there'd be another five-foot sidewalk on the other side, but it wouldn't have a treelawn. And this would be the proposal here. You have the parking bay, twelve-foot travel lane, parking bay, treelawn, sidewalk, and then the sidewalk flush with the curb on the opposite side. There was a traffic impact study that the applicant submitted. They contracted with DKS Associates in Portland, Oregon, to conduct the traffic study of the impacts of the proposed subdivision on existing roadways and primary intersections within the area. The intersections that were analyzed were the Mountain View Road, D Street intersection, the Mountain View Road, F Street intersection. The impact study was conducted for the full build-out of the subdivision at an estimated two-hundred-and-seventy new single-family housing units. The TIS concluded the proposed subdivision is expected to result in minimal impacts to vehicle traffical conditions at the study intersections and meet city operating standards for all development scenarios. Study also concluded that no mitigations are needed to address potential project impacts to traffic conditions. And these were the tables that were submitted in that analysis, that's attached to your packet, but as you can see, looking at the 2022 baseline, all the way out to full build-out of the phases here, these, the operating standard is Level of Service D. So this is a scale really ranging from Level of Service A all the way to Level of Service F. You can see AMP peak and PM peak, Level of Service, even projected at full build-out is a B, as well as PM peak is a B as well, which is really good. Brings us to Mountain View F Street. Same scenario, looking at the baseline from 2022, and then going through all the phases. Operating standards, Level of Service D. You can see the AMP peak is operating, will be proposed to be operating under a Level of Service A, which is the best you can have. And then the PM peak is a Level of Service A, which would transition into Level of Service B at full build-out. So optimal results here as well. And they did provide a, a trip breakdown and a number of daily trips that the full build-out would propose to generate, two thousand five hundred and fifty, and this just shows the dispersment of the area. So you'd see a fifty percent increase on Mountain View, plus fourteen, around fourteen hundred trips per day, a little over a thousand to Orchard, one hundred and twenty-five north Mountain View here, and then two thousand increase south of F Street. So the City of Moscow Engineering Department's reviewed the traffic impact study, has no concern, concerns with the analysis and the results, but the results do indicate a fifty percent increase in traffic on portions of Mountain View Road is projected to occur as a result of the subdivision at full build-out. And then there is a segment of Mountain View between the intersection of Sloniker Drive and Mountain View Road, extending south to the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center, does not currently have sidewalks, bike lanes on either side of the street. Therefore, the Engineering Department's recommending that the applicant be responsible for fifty percent of the construction costs associated with the installation of curbing sidewalk and roadway widening in order to connect this missing segment of sidewalk on Mountain View Road. And the Moscow Engineering Department shall determine which side of the street the improvement shall be constructed upon. Engineering Department also has some concerns with site distance after Mountain View Road makes the ninety-degree turn to the east with vehicles queuing up for the left turn on the Sloniker Drive. And they're recommending that the applicant evaluate a left turn lane from eastbound Mountain View on the Sloniker to determine whether a turn lane's warranted there. If it is determined a left turn lane is warranted, Engineering is recommending the applicant be responsible for construction of the turn lane. When they, they were looking at this area, it's likely that it would just be paint that would be required, maybe minimal roadway widening in this area, so it may be that we'd just go ahead and do this anyway, even if it didn't determine that it was needed just for safety. So Mountain View Road, this is the segment we're looking at. You can see the, the portion of the sidewalk here, and then the portion here. This is the area really where there's no sidewalk or bike lane in that area, so that's the section we'd be looking at. Water service, existing mains in Sloniker Drive proposed to be extended, Conestoga, it should be Sloniker as well. Two thousand twelve comprehensive water system plan, existing system has adequate potable and fire flows to serve the area. Sanitary sewer, there is a main in Sloniker as well, will be extended throughout the subdivision primarily within the public and private streets. And then the two thousand and eleven comprehensive sewer system plan also indicates the existing systems adequate to serve additional flow. And storm sewer in the area is intended to be piped to the detention pond, was pointed out earlier, in the southwest corner. So all detention facilities of development will need to meet Moscow's stormwater runoff control standards, which require stormwater to be detained at the pre-development rate. Parkland dedication, there's ten point nine eight acres of net developable land within the first phase. The R2 zone requires a five percent dedication, neighborhood business is a nine. Twenty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-six square feet of dedication is required for this first phase. The applicant has submitted a letter that's attached to your packet, proposing to defer the parkland dedication for Phase One to Phase Two for the, the entire subdivision for a natural area comprised of three, a little over three acres. In a one point one four acre area that totals four point two acres of open space that will include grading, a detention basin, and a ten-foot wide gravel pathway base provided by the developer. So it's anticipated the parkland dedication requirements for the entire subdivision are going to be around two point three acres, give or take. That four point two acres of parkland dedication together with agreed-upon improvements to the parkland property would satisfy all parkland dedication requirements for the entire Woodbury subdivision. It's the Assistant Parks and Recreation Director's opinion that the proposed deferral of parkland dedication meets the dedication requirements for the subdivision. And the Parks and Rec Commission actually meets tomorrow to review the proposal, and they'll provide a recommendation to city council for the parkland. So staff recommends that the commission conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony received, recommend approval of the proposed comprehensive plan land use change from auto-urban residential to the combination of auto-urban residential and suburban commercial. Recommend approval of the rezone from the Ag Forest Zone to the moderate-density single-family residential R2 zone and the neighborhood business zone with no conditions. Recommend approval of the proposed PUD with no conditions. And recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat for Woodbury subdivision with two conditions. And those are from Engineering, so that left turn lane from eastbound Mountain View onto Sloniker Drive shall be evaluated by the applicant to determine whether a turn lane is warranted, and if so, the applicant shall be responsible for the construction of that turn lane. And then in order to mitigate the increases in vehicular and pedestrian traffic on Mountain View Road as detailed in the applicant's traffic impact study, applicant shall be responsible for fifty percent of the construction costs associated with the installation of curbing, sidewalk, roadway widening, in order to connect the existing pedestrian bicycle facilities near the intersection of Sloniker Drive and Mountain View Road with the, with the pedestrian bicycle facilities on Mountain View Road near the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center. Proposed roadway improvement shall only occur on one side of the roadway, which shall be determined by the City of Moscow Engineering Department. In accordance with the commission's decision on all four of these items, direct staff to prepare relevant criteria and standards for all of them. I'd certainly try to answer any questions that you have.
So anybody have questions for Mike before we start the public hearing? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I, I'm actually addressing the commissioners on that. We'll, we'll get to you here in just a minute, so, and we'll be able to direct questions as you, as you come up. So, Mike, thank you very much. With that, we will get the public hearing started. I'm going to read the official title here. Proposal for a comprehensive plan land use designation, zoning designation, preliminary subdivision plat, and plan unit development for a twenty-one point seven-three acre property proposed to be annexed into the City of Moscow and generally located north of Sloniker Drive, east of Arborcrest, and south of Trail Road within the City of Moscow. So what, what we'll do here is, we'll first hear from the applicant, and then we'll hear from anybody that's in support of the project or general comments, and then anybody, you know, opposed. I would ask that when you come to the podium, you'd state your name and address for the record, and we're going to limit to three minutes for each testimony, and I'll give you a signal when the three minutes is up. We want to make sure, there's a lot of you here, and we want to make sure that you all get an opportunity to talk. And certainly, if you have questions as you come up, we'll, we'll make sure that we get it directed to the right place for, for answers. So with that, declare the public meeting open, and we'd like to hear from the applicant
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mark Wentz. I live at one zero zero four Dairy Lane in Moscow. Yeah, I'd like to just take, Mike's done such a great job, I mean, has explained so much, but I would like to just say a few things about, the project as a whole, and so that we understand really what's, what's happening here, because it's a little unusual project. About thirty to forty years ago, a movement got started in urban planning called New Urbanism. It's not really new in a lot of ways, it's really just about taking the, the things that, you know, the best things from the past and boiling them down and, and, and putting them all in one place. So tree-lined streets, broader walkways, front porches, bringing the houses closer to, you know, the sprawl, and they're making a little bit smaller lots, creating more green spaces, walkways, bikeways, and so forth like that. The, the movement, you know, was really a response to post-war sprawl, and changing that, because that's just simple to do, is really creates a lot of work, so we've been working on this for, for, for some time, but, and it may not look like a, let me just take a few minutes to just explain the subdivision. The, the design, by the way, was, was done by a, a firm called Camar and Associates. They, they had worked with Andreas Dwaney and some of the guys that had really were promoting New Urbanism back thirty years, thirty years ago. And they are responsible for a project in Sea, just south of Seattle, about two hours, called Seabrook. So I went over and looked at that, met with their firm there, and we started to, you know, shape this out of a few days of just spending time, looking at the examples of what they'd done there, and then maybe applying them here. So, so what we have here is a, I don't know if I need to be, a, you kind of got this center core around, around the park here. And then surrounding that, you've got four smaller subdivisions. So here's one right here in Phase One, you kind of have to look past the dark lines. Here's one here, about twenty, twenty-five lots. Here's one here, twenty, twenty-five lots. And these are fed, like in this case, right here, by this alley. So the, the, the garages are in the back, and on the front is a, just your porch that fronts onto a park. So that's the same situation here. We've got alley, alley access to your, to your garages, and your front door is just on a, on a, you know, setback from a sidewalk, and across from the sidewalk is a park, and on the other side of it is your neighbor. Again, with kind of front, you know, we're trying to include front porches. Part of the idea was to just bring, you know, create places where, to create a great place for community, you know? It's, it's a habitat for humanity in a real sense, I mean, in another sense here. So that, that's, that's the idea outside around that is the larger lots here, where everything is like tree-lined streets, so the big canopy, the large trees, like, like what we see in Fort Russell. And so that, again, not that I can take away from Fort Russell, but, I mean, that's sort of described that, and that's why we use the, that, that term. And then on the outside is very large lots. So the larger lots touching the outside edge, the center becoming more tighter, that's one of the concepts of New Urbanism, what they call the transect. So it's kind of in a micro design here, but this incorporates a lot of the ideals of, of New Urbanism. I was fortunate enough to be instructed in New Urbanism by Nels Reese about twenty years ago at the university, and so it was, some of these come, come out of Nels's own teachings there. Within this as well, so we've got these parks. These parks are interconnected by a walkway. If you look at this, I mean, it's a greenway, so this is maybe like thirty, forty feet wide, so the sidewalk plus trees. It follows all the way around. This goes all the way around, you can see how that you could just take a walk and never, you're just crossing a street there, but you're back into like a greenway. This is a little smaller neighborhood that's on the outside, but with larger lots. So they're, they're, they're little micro neighborhoods within the neighborhood is the, is the idea. So there's also greenways, if you look, if you follow one of these, that cut all the way through, like this, all the way through the subdivision and go this way. These ones are on a one-way street, they look down across over, you know, across this naturalized area that we're going to do. This is sort of a, a wetlands in here, and so the idea was to do sort of a naturalized hillside walkway there that the city has talked about planting out. So, so altogether, I mean, there's a lot of planning that went into it. We're excited about the design, we think it's going to be a real asset to Moscow, and happy to present it.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on, we would like to hear from anybody that is in support of the project or a general, general nature.
Yes.
Please come up, state your name and address.
My name's Scott Sumner. I'm at one oh six South Hayes. I am the engineer and working with the applicant on the development. I'm going to fidget with it, sorry. Working with Mark on this project has been unlike any of the other developments I've worked on in the last five, ten years. It's something that a lot of developers, especially right now, if they're looking for ways to maximize profits, ways to smash as many houses in as small a space as they can, and that's never really been the goal of this, this project that I've, with working with Mark. He really has an eye for what he wants to bring as an asset to this community. He wants to enhance Moscow instead of just trying, you know, make as much money as possible on, on the development and just take away from Moscow. This is a development that I feel is going to be an asset to this side of town. Looking at Moscow, there's really only a few places where Moscow can Looking at Moscow, there's really only a few places where Moscow can expand. If you look at the GIS map, there's, I don't know, a handful of families that own just about all the land around Moscow. So, when we start looking at areas where you can develop and things, there's not very many times that places like this come about. In the newspaper just a couple of weeks ago, they said, you know, Moscow's last 10 years about 1% growth averaged over 10 years. And you look at that, that's 250 people. It's 250 people every year on average that's coming to Moscow. And trying to find places where people can live, and you're starting to see it now, where there's just not enough homes where people can live, and housing prices are going through the roof. And pretty soon, a lot of the people that are going to be pushed out of Moscow are the people that have made Moscow Moscow. And so, part of these developments, and this one, is to be able to do that in a responsible way, where we can build it an asset, something that people will be proud of. And in 20 years, you're going to look at this, and you're going to go, geez, this is, it fits with Moscow's personality, the theme, and just is something that you'll look back and be proud of. And so, working on that on the development side, I've really enjoyed working on this. We've probably put more work into this stage of the project than anything else that I've worked on probably ever. Just the details and the aspects and things saying, how can we improve this? And how can we make this look and feel a certain way? So, I've really enjoyed it, and we've worked really hard with the city of Moscow to meet Mark's vision with meeting all the requirements, making sure with water, sewer, storm, traffic, fire safety, we've really worked hard with them, and they've done a phenomenal job of working with us to make sure we meet all those requirements, and we're providing something that will meet the demands and needs of the people that'll live here in the surrounding area. I'm here for questions on the technical side, if you guys have any, or if anybody from the neighborhood have them as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else that would like to speak in support of the project or of a general nature?
Hi, my name is Levi Wentz. I live at 415 North Van Buren Street. I also work for Wentz Company, so a little bit of nepotism there. But I just want to build off of what Scott was saying. I started working with my dad just a few months ago and came in partway into this project. But I think for all the concerns that are out there, just building on what Scott is saying is, you know, putting in the extra work of making sure that this is a good space for people. We want to design, you know, this is where people's kids are going to be growing up, and so understanding that, that we're not just building a home, but we're building an entire community. And I think we're really trying to do what Moscow is about. We all love Moscow. If you live in Moscow, you love Moscow, and the reality of the situation is that Moscow is growing. As Scott was saying, housing prices are going through the roof. And so, being able to, how do we retain what's good about Moscow and grow it, as you were saying in the opening, in an equitable way? How can we continue to grow Moscow and yet retain that small-town charm that we all love and that community that we love about Moscow? So, we're really trying to achieve that in this development. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, before we move on, Mike, I wanted to...
One more here.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have somebody else coming up? Okay, good. Thank you.
I'm Sean Wilson, 2780 North Mountain View Road, Moscow. I am here on behalf of Trail Family LLC. I just wanted to put in a plug for Wentz and Company. We've been in this process with talking with them. This is not a decision that was made lightly by the Trail family. This process has been over a year and a half, as we've discussed, and as we've worked through things. What you're seeing before you is stuff that we've worked through and talked through for many, many months. And so, again, for them, this is land that's been in the Trail family since the 50s, give or take, and two of the members of the family still live very much adjacent to this, so their stamp of approval is on this. And I just wanted to speak in support of it on their behalf. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, we, and I meant to mention this as we began, we received a number of letters that came in later than normally we would accept. I want to just state that we'd like those included in the record, even though they were received late. So, I know there were some that came even today. So, just for the record, include everybody, so. Okay, anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the project? All right, we will then entertain discussion from anybody that would like to speak in opposition. Again, if you would come up to the podium, state your name and address, and please limit comments to three minutes, if you would. Please.
Well, hello. My name is Megan Clemmersrud. My address is 538 North Blaine Street, Moscow. I recently read with concern in the Daily News public notices of another proposed large subdivision, this one asking to be annexed into our city limits. Moscow just approved the 240-unit Eddington subdivision south of town. All around Moscow, I see new development currently in the process of building, and I ask, do we really know if there's enough water to support this development? I understand the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee has been working on alternative water sources, one possibility being to pipe water from the Snake River. How costly will they be? Who is going to pay for them? Let us pause for answers before approving these large developments. The most current evidence suggests that the Grand Ron Aquifer does not experience significant recharge. Moscow's source of water comes from only two aquifers. Daily News reporter Garrett Cabeza earlier this month reported, "In the past decade, water levels for the Grand Ron Aquifer, the deepest of the two aquifers, have declined by 0.7 feet per year." After studying the city of Moscow's comprehensive plan, it has prompted me to ask more questions regarding the Woodbury development. The MCP's values and policies regarding growth state to provide for a safe and sustainable water supply that meets the current and future needs of the community, to conserve and protect the groundwater of the region's aquifers. While the aquifers had been subject of many studies over the years, there are still data gaps that need to be filled. Again, I ask, can we pause this growth and fill these gaps before we make such big decisions? If the Woodbury development is annexed into the city, they will be drawing from that same aquifer. How much water will they need and use? Moscow has already agreed to restrict aquifer withdrawals, and we rely on water conservation to counterbalance growth. In the Woodbury development proposal of 74 units in Phase One, there is no mention of water conservation or sustainability, no designs of wiscape or use of drought-tolerant landscape. Instead, it will consist of a few large garden lot home sites, group homes with common areas of front yards, four private parks, a small private pool, a private hot tub, shady tree-lined streets, and a good amount of landscaped green space, which in their proposal is labeled as grass. Recently, Tyler Palmer, Deputy City Supervisor of Public Works and Services, stated, "The absolute biggest shift that we need to see in Moscow and American society in general is we really need to divorce our affinity for green grass." Again, I ask, how much water will this new development take from aquifers? Pause this future annexation and development until these questions of water resources and sustainability are answered." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Justin Goodwin at 1542 Lanny Lane. I'd just like to address a few of the items that we've been discussing here, and one of my major concerns is the access. If we use a little bit of critical thinking, we can see that we have one main access for pretty much most of the phase is until we get to the Arborcrest. The likelihood that people drive around to come down back south is very slim. The neighborhoods that already exist there aren't designed to support the kind of traffic you're talking about. We live in a community where homes average two-plus cars, and we can see the thousands of trips they're talking about, but they, we nicely talk about it down on Mountain View, and we talk about making a turn lane on Mountain View with just some spray paint. I don't know how many of you have gone around that corner recently, but there's not enough room for spray paint to turn left, and the amount of people that are going to be back up there. And considering the growth that we already have out there with Logos School coming in, there will be peak times that people are coming back the other way. So, we're now going to have a lot of cross-traffic that's there, and that's not sustainable. And where are we going to get the roadway to support that? The other road is, my Lanny Lane is coming off of Orchard. They'll just become highways. I moved in about a year and a half ago to a nice, quiet neighborhood to raise my family. The idea that the people who are going through my community were the people that lived within my community, not just seeing me as a byway. And we're going to build a private community that they talk about being great for everyone here, but it's community-designed for them, the people that are going to live there. These houses aren't going to be priced for the majority of people that live in Moscow. In the last 10 years of banking, I've seen a lot of financials of businesses and individuals in our community, and I can tell you that the vast majority of them can't afford the type of houses that are being built here. I am blessed to be in a situation where I can afford a home at a similar price, but trying to pigeonhole people by saying 1,200 square feet is enough to raise a family and selling that for the 400s, potentially $500,000 range is not sustainable. We talk about how building more houses is going to somehow drive down prices. We're looking at doubling, maybe tripling the amount of homes we build a year. Where does the construction crews come from? If they have to be outsourced, they're only going to cost more. You can't magically make this appear and be cost-effective. So, what is going to happen? We're going to keep driving the people that grew up here, lived here, maybe those who are the backbone of our society, that do infrastructure and take care of these things, and say, hey, you're not welcome here. The new Moscow is this: private communities with private access, private roads, and you're not welcome. We have a lot of problems in our community to address currently. Adding more does not help us out. I'd also like to make some comments about, we talk about potential coffee shops. I've worked with a lot of businesses over the last handful of years. I don't know a single business that caters to 60 families and calls that a profitable business. You're also going to be driving more people into the community to support it. We have a lot of great businesses here that our community goes out of its way to support. We saw it through COVID, we see it now. It's a wonderful part of our community, but you're now going to provide one where you say, it's there to support the local community, but you're just adding traffic for the byways of the communities that are already there and the neighborhoods that are already there. It doesn't make sense. It just, it doesn't make sense within what we have here, what people want here. We've had communities that are similar to this, and the only reason why they've ever filled up is because there was nothing else.
Thank you very much.
My name is Paul Hendricks. My wife Beth and I live at 1306 Sloniker Drive, directly adjacent to the proposed Woodbury development. We came to Moscow about nine years ago from Alabama and bought our home on Sloniker Drive in 2019 after selling a home across town. We strongly object to Sloniker Drive being the sole access point for this project, and we feel that the traffic study referenced in the application is flawed to the point of being irrelevant with respect to the reality of this proposed development. I've worked in the construction equipment space for 34 years now. I've worked in South Florida, Alabama, Mississippi, Tennessee, areas with quite a bit of development, and I have witnessed firsthand what existing neighborhoods must endure when an adjacent property is developed. It is one thing to add a development where roads and sidewalks and other infrastructure already exist, but it is an entirely different set of circumstances when all of that infrastructure must be built before the first home foundation is poured. The reality is that literally thousands of tons of stone, asphalt, concrete, precast drainage structures, pipe, landscape materials, et cetera, must be hauled into the site. In addition to this, all the machinery that is required to do the site work will come in as well. When the operators are coming in daily, and they're coming in daily until the site work is complete, and I remind you that all of this is before any home construction begins. So, then though, after the site work is finished, then comes the steady stream of trades workers, concrete trucks, concrete pumps, building material deliveries. The fact that the traffic study did not address any of this is very troubling. They didn't even mention Sloniker or Lanny Drive. There was no mention of it. So, those of us who live on Sloniker, as well as those of us who live on, those that live on Lanny Lane, have seen what traffic patterns result from just a few homes under construction. And it's safe to say that entirely different, it's an entirely different picture than what the traffic study paints. And the roads, sidewalks, water and sewer, power lines, all of that stuff are already built on Lanny Lane. In March, Mr. Wentz held a neighborhood meeting to discuss this project, and he checked a box in the development process. They sent out a notice for the public hearing, checked another box. We're at this meeting tonight, we're checking another box. So, what I'm asking, and I implore the Planning and Zoning Commission, to do more than just check boxes here. Slow down, investigate these very real concerns over construction traffic and access from Sloniker Drive. We feel it is the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission to take a closer look at these, at this flawed traffic study, and consider that a project of this scope and magnitude will adversely affect surrounding neighborhoods for a long time, especially with respect to construction traffic. We ask that you require the developer to use Trail Road as the sole access through at least Phase One of this project. Using Trail Road would impact fewer homes, fewer households, and provide a safer path for construction traffic, even if it means, excuse me, even if it means delaying the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jody Johnson Maynard. I live at 1632 Arborcrest on Moscow, in Moscow. I would like to also add my concerns about traffic. A thousand trips, I believe a day is what was said, on Orchard is not only going to be inconvenient and a nuisance to those of us that live around there, but it's also potentially dangerous. I live on a gravel road. It's not even paved. There are no sidewalks. It is a very, very popular running and walking path. I can't even tell you the number of people that run past or walk past my house every day. We have had probably in the past five years, I'd say about three cars go off the road into the ditch on that curve around Arborcrest. People drive way too fast, so I'm very concerned about that. There are children that ride their bikes to school that go down Orchard. Again, no sidewalks, it's very, very narrow. So, the idea of a thousand extra cars making that path every day is worrisome. I'm also very concerned about the water issue. So, there are soils that are very, very wet in that area. I don't know how those are going to be impacted. So, I haven't read about this, I haven't noticed any materials available, and I didn't actually get to pack it. So, I apologize for that, that I didn't get to follow along as they were explaining the project. But I didn't see anything about the impact of the hydrology, keeping in mind that some of these soils do have very high water tables and are not very well-drained. So, I am concerned about what's going to happen with the hydrology. I heard one drainage water retention pond, but I haven't heard plans for the whole entire development. So, yeah, my concerns are very much rooted in traffic and negative impacts on Arborcrest, Trail, and Orchard, as well as what's going to happen to those wetland soils and the ponds that are connected and run parallel to this development, as far as I can tell from, my eyesight's not that great, so from the back of the room, I'm not quite sure how they line up, but I'd like to see more detail on what's going to happen, hydraulically speaking.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, my name is Anne Hostie. I live at 1183 Wallen. I'm alarmed by the pace of construction in town and its effects on water and on traffic. I know that growth is part of life, but developer-driven growth is changing the character of this once rural community. This proposal, Phase One of a four-phase plan, would ultimately turn 82 acres of Palouse farmland into a residential subdivision, but you know that. The developer intends to build 270 homes, some with additional carriage houses and accessory dwellings. This matters to me because population density equals water use and traffic volume. Mr. Wentz's con, uh, the contractor says that annexation, annexation is consistent with Moscow's comprehensive plan, but I would respectfully disagree. The comprehensive plan states that one of its key objectives is to, quote, "promote the conservation of valuable agricultural lands and Moscow's surrounding rural landscape." This plan does not. Moscow's plan calls for preservation of farmland and conservation of water resources. This plan does not. How does this plan, quote, "conserve sensitive natural areas for aesthetic and ecological purposes"? It does not. The developer's engineer, DKS, uh, projects in writing that with this four-phase development, daily vehicle trips will increase by 50% on Mountain View, 64% on Orchard, and 45% on D Street. They did not include, I would note, the intersection of Sixth and Mountain View, which many people take to the university, or if they're traveling to the Lewiston-Clarkston area for their work. Quite seriously, if traffic increases as they predict, commute times could well double, and it will be miserable. And during construction, as noted, pedestrians, cyclists, drivers will all have to contend with a steady stream of construction vehicles hauling heavy equipment. I know this because they are currently going past my house out on Wallen Road. And for how long? The next 10 years, if all goes as planned, according to the developer. This, uh, will in no way enhance the, the quiet rural character of our community. DKS projects that traffic volume will fit within our current road designations, but neither Orchard nor Mountain View have the sidewalks, bike lanes, and transit facilities consistent with their designation. And it sounds like this is going to be addressed for Mountain View, but what of Orchard? According to Moscow's comprehensive plan, new development should be served by our, quote, "existing transportation network." We need to address this before entertaining any rezoning proposal. And my final point. DKS, uh, predicts that when all four phases are done, the subdivision will generate roughly 2,550 additional vehicle trips per day. They combined this with a traffic estimate for 2021, and this makes sense to me. But their year, quote, "year 2021 baseline estimate" was based on outdated city of Moscow data. They looked at a 15-year-old intersection study from 2006, a study from two, let's say 2017, and data from Moscow's 214, 2014 multimodal transportation plan. If, as a result of this outdated information, DKS underestimated any of their counts, traffic increases could be even steeper than projected. And here in this presentation, I just heard that the comprehensive water plan that was, uh, consulted, uh, is a 2012 plan, I believe, and the comprehensive sewer plan is older than that, and I believe it was 2011.
Excuse me, could you?
I respectfully request that the city conduct a more recent traffic impact study before entertaining this or future rezoning requests. And I'll leave the serious issue of runoff from paved parking, uh, to others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe May. Uh, 1309 Sloniker Drive. My house is probably infected by this more than anybody else's. My wife and I moved here several years ago to, to attend, you know, after I retired, to have the small-town community life, and that's what we got here, but that's starting to slip away from us. I won't go into the comprehensive plan, that's already been done, but I've seen firsthand after several cities from where I used to work, um, of cities that grew faster than their infrastructure could handle. And, um, we are headed in that direction. Moscow will never be a big city. It's, uh, waters, it, and the questions I have on that is its water supply are sustainable. We've, we're okay, approximately 600 homes, just as a rough figure. That's four people for what, you know, for unit, two cars, lawns, toilets, washers, dryers, all that stuff is going to use water. And, um, we don't know that that is a, um, you know, our water supply drops every year a little bit, and without this, how long do we know the water supply is going to last? I, I haven't seen a study that says if at this rate, we are going to run out at a certain time. You've, you've got Harvard, Troy, Genesee, um, even Pullman has been suggesting that they need to back off on water use. The whole West Coast is under a drought. You know, we're kind of in that plane there also. How long is this drought going to last? One, five, 10? Is it going to be here forever? That's really going to impact the water. And, um, do we know how long it's going to last? No, we don't. Traffic's been covered real well. I won't add too much to that, other than I think it's a, a whole lot to ask to have, you know, between 10, 15, 20 years of construction up and down Lanny Lane. We've already had, you know, about four years of construction going, just from Lanny, from Lanny Lane, um, from what they're doing now, and that's been going on. The trucks go in and out, in and out, and now this project's going to put all this traffic on Sloniker coming in and out. Um, I think it's a lot to ask from a, you know, from a really nice neighborhood like, like, uh, Sloniker to, you know, endure that. Something bothered me. We were here, um, on the Third Street hearing, and, um, the traffic was brought up, and, uh, one of the members, you know, uh, a pretty close quote is, "I'm not sympathetic to traffic. I've had traffic all my life here, so just deal with it." That, we all walked out that night thinking, what was that about? That wasn't very conducive to, you know, open-mindedness and, on, you know, issues that we have to get a scolding like that. So what do we do about that? I don't know. Do we, do we, uh, Mas, on, uh, Mountain View, do we, is it time to, to kick that into a, a four-lane highway? You know, that'll deal with the traffic. If it keeps building up out here, you're going to need that road. So let's take care of it before we, you know, before we do all of that and make sure that we, we have the infrastructure for it. You know, elec, electricity, this last heat wave we had, Vista's out there pushing, you know, to, uh, don't, don't use more electricity in peak hours. We may have to go into blackouts and stuff like that. What are all of these, uh, new houses going? They may all have electric cars. That's like having another house there. So even, even our utilities draws. Anyway, our rep, infrastructure is not ready for, for all of this, uh, stuff yet. From my previous job, uh, lessons that I've learned after 34 years in the fire service, narrow streets can easily be blocked by a well-meaning motorist who only leaves their car parked for a minute illegally, which delays big rig fire trucks in emergencies. And, uh, when minutes count, that, uh, that can cost someone their life. I'm, I'm not a fan of the, of the alleyways. I'm not a fan of the narrow streets. I used to be in charge of, uh, an aerial ladder truck, and we would get blocked in quite often because somebody parked illegal, you couldn't get around something, couldn't get to where you needed to do, so you'd have to go to Plan B and stuff like that. Though, though, the, uh, alleyways are probably, probably meet standard if they're cleared.
Can you, uh, wrap up for us, please?
Okay, we've been, uh, we've been told, uh, there's about 200 to 300 families waiting to get to move here to Moscow to enjoy the Moscow life and all that stuff. Where are these families coming from, and are there going to be jobs for them to, is there industries that we don't know about that's coming to help support all these families? And in conclusion, Moscow will be, will never be a large metropolis. And my age is, is, is to, that we save our process, our precise, precious resources for the future, so my kids and my grandkids, which live here, will enjoy the Moscow way of life. I strongly suggest that we delay this project and others until we have answers to the I-don't-knows.
Hi, my name is Kathy Dawes. I live at 1018 East E Street. My main concern is that specific relevant criteria and standards for rezone, PUD, and preliminary plat are not being met by this proposal. For both the rezone and PUD, the first standard, A, states, quote, "The proposed rezone or PUD is consistent with comprehensive plan goals." Chapter five of the comp plan states, "This chapter evaluates the city's projected growth in light of its available water supply, public facilities, infrastructure, services, and available land for development and redevelopment. This effort is guided by the following general goals: to provide for sustainable growth while conserving natural resources and enhancing the character of the community and region; and to advocate and practice the sustainable management and development of local and regional water sources and supplies to meet the needs of both current and future residents." I do not see that this development plan includes an effort to conserve natural resources, particularly our water. Specifically, it is inconsistent with the city's goal for sustainable management and development of local and regional water sources and supplies that will meet the needs of all of us. I, uh, I'm going to go to the PUD standard D and preliminary plat standard C, which both state, "Public services and utilities are available or can be made available and are adequate to accommodate the proposed PUD or proposed subdivision." In the PUD application on page two, Part D, the developer states merely, quote, "All utilities are directly accessible," unquote. This is an inadequate response. This proposal describes, quote, "Well landscaped grounds, landscaped common green, shared open lawn, broad tree-lined walks, clusters around a center landscaped area, et cetera." There will definitely be a need for irrigation, and I don't, I don't believe that the developers nor the commissioners can guarantee that water, these water resources and related public services will be adequate without negatively impacting all of us here in Moscow. I saw today for the first time what the plan is for using runoff, and that is to, not to recharge the aquifer in any way, but to have storm water directed to one location. There is no plan for permeable paving in driveways or walkways. There's no storm water collection by homes for their yards and parks and things like that. And lastly, preliminary plat standard D states, "The proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. Reduction of water resources available to Moscow residents due to the greatly increased demand for water by the homes and residents of this proposed subdivision will definitely be detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare of all residents of Moscow." Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Andy Johansson. My wife and I live at 1212 Sloniker Lane, which is just north of, uh, 1212 Sloniker Drive, which is just north of Lanny Lane. We are, uh, in, um, have serious concerns about, uh, Sloniker being used as a primary access for construction. All of the other, uh, subdivisions similar to this, which had been introduced, uh, Seabrook, Northern California, et cetera, are isolated communities located near freeways, near, uh, heavy, uh, roads that have capability of heavy traffic. Uh, my daughter lives in another subdivision similar to this in, uh, near Boulder, Longmont, Colorado. They have two, two, it's a similar size and shape, uh, subdivision, but there's only 150 houses. But they have two four-lane roads, one on, on each side of the subdivision, so there's easy access in and out. Still, they have five exits, exits, uh, one with a stop, stop sign, uh, stoplight, uh, several with a stop sign, but during heavy traffic, there are many times when you can still only make a right turn to get out of there and have to, uh, negotiate your way back to go the other direction because it's impossible to turn in the direction that you want to go. Sloniker Drive has al, already increased, uh, in, in its traffic, uh, because of the, after the completion of Lanny Lane, and it's not because of the additional 11 or 12 houses that are finished on, uh, Lanny Lane. It's because of through traffic that's coming from the north part of, uh, down Orchard and, uh, all of the streets up in that area. And they're coming through, uh, Lanny Lane to, uh, Sloniker Drive. So we already have more traffic than, uh, we are, uh, we're anticipated to have. Now, think of the, the added traffic when, uh, Logau School is completed and, uh, of all of the heavy truck traffic that's going to be, uh, going, transferring through there during construction, which will last four years. I have, uh, one suggestion, which, uh, I would like you to strongly consider, and that is the completion of, when you're building, uh, Phase One, complete the Sloniker Drive extension on up to Trail Road. Either that, or, uh, you could use the, the pencil-din, uh, emergency, uh, road. If you did that, if you built the, uh, the additional road up Sloniker, which, uh, has the jog in it there, and built a good foundation, concrete, I mean, a good foundation for, uh, gravel road, all-weather, and make that the primary entrance, uh, it would be much safer than coming up, uh, Sloniker Drive. Sloniker Drive would not be ruined, and taxpayers have to pay for the repair later, and it would probably save money because he, while you have all of the heavy moving equipment there already, uh, you can, uh, you, you wouldn't have to have so much construction there, uh, in Phase Two. Mark Wentz mentioned, uh, earlier that, that part of this is not being done because the farmer farming the trail property, uh, wants to continue farming. This would not prevent that. There are a lot of fields in, uh, on the Palouse that have a road through them. Also, it would, the effect was, would be to, uh, it would take a couple of acres for the actual road, and he might have to change his pattern that he uses for, uh, seeding and harvesting, et cetera. So I would like to, uh, strongly suggest that we try something different, other than using Sloniker as the primary road, uh, for the reasons of safety and, uh, to save taxpayer dollars. Uh, I think the, if the farm issue is pertinent, I think the, uh, Trail family and the, uh, Mark Wentz LLC could probably, uh, have a little mitigation for the farmer to, uh, take care of his concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
David Hall, 1334 Wallen Road. Hello, Commissioners, I'd like you to, or I'd like to support Ms. Hostes and Ms. Dawes' concerns. I'd like you to, I'd like to support Ms. Hostas and Ms. Dawes' concerns. This is contrary to the comp plan for, for the water issues, conserving water and preserving for the current, future use, and for preserving ag land. It's interesting that the only pro speakers on these and recent annexing seem to be developers who have money in the pot and no neighbors or anybody generally. And the third thing is three words, water use budget. Thank you.
Heather Walker. I live at 1115 Sloniker Drive. I have three children on Sloniker Drive. There are other children on my street, along with other children on Lanny Lane. I would invite any of you to come and sit on Sloniker Drive, on my, on my lawn, by all means, and observe the traffic that's already coming through since the addition of Lanny Lane. It has increased already quite a bit. Just last week, as my husband and my kids, we were out washing our car on our driveway. We yelled quite a bit at several cars driving through. None of those cars were residents of either Sloniker Drive or Lanny Lane. And we asked them to slow down in maybe not the sweetest way, but we did ask them to slow down. I know that other neighbors have also done the same. Sloniker Drive is a wide road. Mr. Wentz addressed that in our neighborhood meeting, and he talked about how narrower streets will slow cars down, but Sloniker Drive is already a wide road. And as I, I see that being a problem as they come from small neighborhoods or small streets and enter into Sloniker, that they will just speed up. In early 2019, we had somebody go around the corner from Lanny Lane onto Sloniker, which does not have any sort of stop signs anywhere there. And they took the corner too hard. They were not paying attention, and they took out my trees and my park, my parkway. Now, that probably doesn't seem like a big deal because it was trees. Trees are replaceable, but when you grow trees for 10 years, you know how long it takes to get trees to that size. So that was disheartening. And I feel like we are only going to see a great increase in traffic. And it is scary as a parent with children. We built our home on Sloniker 12 years ago. It has been a relatively quiet neighborhood. I feel like if you add, if, if this continues to go through at this magnitude of homes and this high density, Sloniker will now turn into a thoroughfare. It will, it will not be a quiet neighborhood anymore. On Mountain View Road, where if you're heading north on Mountain View and you take that hard right right before you get to Sloniker, that is a very hard blind right. And if you increase traffic to the magnitude that we're talking about, hundreds and hundreds of cars that will now be accessing Sloniker Drive to get into this Woodbury subdivision, that's going to be a scary corner. It's already scary. The amount of traffic, foot traffic, that happens from Mountain View onto Sloniker and what, there, there needs to be a lot of improvements there for the safety of everybody involved. I can only imagine that it's only going to get busier with Logos eventually being built. If you've ever been on Mountain View, anytime in an evening, especially during soccer season when Parks and Rec is going on, it is a steady stream of traffic from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. every night. And several of those cars will go from Sloniker to Lanny and onto Orchard. And now it's just causing so much traffic. It is, this, the, the possibilities, the numbers of cars, I would really urge a traffic study to be done with Sloniker and Lanny Lane. And, and the amount of construction is also scary for a parent. Those vehicles are big, loud vehicles and not always paying attention to the kids on their bikes. So it, it's very concerning. So if anything, I would beg for speed bumps. I'd hate to have speed bumps put on my street, but we've got to slow people down. I can't stand out there every night and yell at everybody that drives down the road to slow down. We've actually gone and knocked on a door of somebody we recognized that was speeding down our road and asked them to please stop, to please slow down. More needs to be done in order to address the traffic issues that would happen with Sloniker and Lanny. It just, it, it turns into a highway. You're turning, this, this turns a very quiet neighborhood into a highway. And it's, it's sad. Let's not do that to a, a nice neighborhood. We want to live on nice neighborhoods, right? I mean, please tell me you want to live on a nice neighborhood and not a collector's street, which I really feel that this will turn into a collector's street.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Feeny. I live on 958 Orchard Avenue. I'm a licensed professional geologist. And I would, I have two points to make. One is that our water is a significant issue in the city of Moscow. We don't know enough about it. We haven't done enough studying about it. What we do know is that we're losing our water and our aquifer, both the Wanamun and the Grand Ron, at a significant rate. And those two aquifers are not just our aquifers. They're Pullman's, Colfax's, and Palouse's. We have to be stewards to not just ourselves, not just our neighbors, but to the entire region. So we're responsible for a lot of stuff. Probably need more water studies before we start overdeveloping. I love what you guys have done. It's really beautiful. It's really great. It seems to be a lot of thoughtful planning. I would like that same thoughtful planning to come from the commission, not just have somebody walk up and go, "Whoa, let's develop this thing quickly." This development doesn't seem to have much connection to the city of Moscow. Seems to be well interiorly connected, but where's the bike lanes that connect to the rest of the city? Where's the bus route that's planning on feeding the rest of the city? The arterials are going to get, they're going to get messed up. That's all, that's a lot of traffic, 1,000 more cars on Orchard Avenue. That's not insignificant. It's a, you know, Lanny Lane and Sloniker. I, I, you know, that study only pointed out Mountain View. Mountain View's not a residential neighborhood. But Lanny Lane, Sloniker, and Orchard are. I strongly urge you guys to reconsider the, the infrastructure traffic study. I don't think it's adequate enough. Roundabouts, slow traffic down is a great idea, but let's keep traffic moving. This, does this, does this numbers, do the numbers take into account the, the new Logos School? Or are we just looking at this insular? It's just one typical idea. We need to think 40 years ahead. These guys have told us, 20 years from now, this place is going to be great. I don't necessarily agree that the infrastructure and that the water that we need to do can handle it. We've got four plans put together by the Palouse Base and Aquifer Committee to resolve some of our aquifer problems, but we haven't moved forward on any of them, and they all are going to cost upwards of $100 million. Are we ready for that? Have we prepared? We need to start thinking forward as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Suzanne Kurtz. I live at 966 Bezzent Run, which is right on Orchard. So I have all the concerns that people have already mentioned. I will not repeat them because you've heard them now. And I do share their concerns. I think many of you articulated things very well. I think no one has really emphasized the situation with water runoff. And I have a concern there. Moscow has been dealing with flooding for many years. It's expensive, as you know. And I, I think we need more detail, more data, if you like, about really how many square feet of paved or covered with homes, land, is this going to involve? And where, what kind of runoff will that put into place? And where will that runoff go? Our current system of streams does not handle it. Where is it going to go? Who's going to pay the expense that is involved in dealing with that? And so I'm, I'll be very brief because the other points have been made, but I think that is a concern that needs to be addressed with more data, again. Not just with generalities about, oh, well, it's a beaut, it is beautiful, but I think it doesn't address the concerns that we as citizens have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Nealon. I live at 1215 Sloniker. And so I, again, I'm not going to repeat all, everything. I have the same issues with, with traffic and with water and all the land use activities. But I did, I wanted to play on Andy Johansson's talk about making the entrance would be the secondary pathway coming in from trail and rather than the main, main entrance for all the building to be off of Sloniker. When, when we were talking about, we talked about Lanny Lane here, we were down in this, I think in this area about, what, four years ago when we started the Lanny Lane project? And one of, one of the issues were, again, there are going to be two entrances to Lanny, which goes from Sloniker to Orchard. And one of the things that we were trying to keep from happening at that point in time was that we wanted to keep Sloniker blocked off into Lanny Lane until the building was done. I don't know if you remember that, but that was, it was a talk, a discussion. And that wasn't going to be an issue because, because whatever the reasons were at that point in time. So we, we backed off from that, those that live on, on Sloniker, we backed off from that activity. And, and we've been paying for it. You've heard it tonight, how many, the increased traffic, three or four times what the normal traffic would be. And again, it's not the Lanny Lane people. So anyway, it's just, it's an easier way to get down Mountain View to get wherever you're going when you, when you come across, go down Sloniker. My, my suggestion would be, again, like Johansson said, to make, make the trail the main construction way, but also to keep that Sloniker blocked off from, from that new point, at least through this first phase, until we get a bit. So, because if you, if you open it up, that people are going to use it, right? The construction guys are going to be using it. Even if you bring the heavy equipment in, the heavy equipment's going to be staying there. It's not going to move until, until the buildings are done. But all the daily activity, all the support stuff, whenever they're building a, a new house, which they're still building on Lanny Lane, here comes the cement trucks. Well, you know, people have already mentioned that, so I don't want to reiterate that. But if you keep that, that Sloniker blocked off during that first phase and have, that forces people to come in off the secondary road, which now becomes the primary, that will at least alleviate the traffic, at least for, well, my lifetime, anyway. So, so.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else that would like to address the commission? Okay, we'll, I'm sorry.
Can I have one more question?
Yes, sir.
The little piece of, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of.
Come up to the. That's okay.
Joe May, again, 1309 Sloniker. The, right across from me, there's a, it's not quite on the map, but it's, there's, there's lines through it where Sloniker goes into your project. The cul-de-sac there, what, what is the, what is going to happen to that?
I don't know exactly, Joe, because I don't own it.
Okay.
So I don't know who does. The, the, the boat there is obviously created like a temporary turnaround.
Yes. Yeah, so will, I, I was wondering, will that revert back to the owner of the property, which happens to be sitting in the room here?
Typically, that's the way those things work, but I'd have to look, I'd have to look at the.
Will it be cleared off and put back to natural?
It's typically up to the owner of the property. Usually, there's an easement across that property, which has the temporary turnaround. And then once the street's extended, then it reverts back to that owner, and they can deal with it what, how they choose. But I would have to specifically look at the development agreement to see how that's worded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing that we don't have any other folks that want to address in opposition, final presentation from the developer?
Trying to make this brief.
And keep it brief, if you would, please. Thank you.
Sorry, it's going to be a little bit shotgun because I just kind of, but I'm sorry I didn't clarify it, but this right here is the heavy construction concrete entrance. That's our full intention, is that until this phase is completely paved out, that will be the entrance for all of the earth-moving equipment, heavy, heavy construction and concrete. So we just need to work through our, you know, that stipulation exactly how we're going to word that. But the idea here is that, and let me, let me point out also, Paul and, and Mike and Andy and Joe, that this site balances. So there's not going to be, there's not intended to be any dirt coming off of it, just in terms of hauling dirt away. And in addition, all the equipment's going to come in, come in right here. So you're not going to see any, any, you know, trucks hauling dirt away like maybe you did on Lanny. That shouldn't be there. The, and that, by the way, this, this, this road right here was something I worked out with the, with the trail family, came out of the neighborhood meeting. So that's a volunteer thing. The city did not require that. But after our meeting, that made a lot of sense. So I, you know, something that we're, I, I want it to work really well because I recognize that you have a really sweet situation right there on Sloniker, and we don't want to, you know, we don't want to be a minimal disturbance to it, so. Okay, connectivity, discussion about connectivity. We're not insular. We're not to ourselves. There's six different entrances. There's one here. One of the tenets of good traffic design is to connect, because when you don't connect, you concentrate. So connection is just good design. The grass and retention, okay, grass and water, okay, we're, right now, we're doing a 12-home project over in Pullman. There's absolutely no grass in the yards. They share, they share a little green area like this, that, you know, is a little bit smaller than that, but I mean, it's probably the equal to one or two houses on Sloniker or what the, what the grass might be. There is no grass in the front yards. It's just shrubs, you know, and all these. So also, we're a, address, just in terms of that, do we have, we working to have an increase of like gravel and permeable surfaces? So for example, in our alleyways, that's one of the things that we, why we wanted to have more, more gravel. It's sort of hard because the standards are, that you need to have, you know, fire trucks turn around on this stuff. So, but walkways, there's a lot of gravel walkways that are going to be in here and areas where water, we, we picture it permeating. Again, so our idea of like, there's grass where you can use it, but the rest of it's dripped, so, which is, which really cuts down on, on water consumption instead of sprinkling. House prices, the cottages, the, the, these, these probably, I picture the demographic that's going to go in here is empty nesters and, and mature singles, okay? In the 12 homes we have, 11 of them went to that demographic. We don't have a housing product for them. They're the largest buyer group that's out there. 40 years ago, it was families with children. Now, the number one buyer group is families without children, which is really empty nesters. And number two, it's singles. So we're not doing a product for them. I mean, you don't see home builders doing it. This is a flat site. It's going to be really unique in that regard, that people can, that, you know, older people can be there and be in a safer situation than on a slope. So I like the product type. I think it serves our, our community, and it's not all families. It's not all elderly. It mixes everything together. And those start, by the way, over in Pullman, we're doing a similar product, and they start in the very, the low threes. So I mean, you know, take it for what it is. It's more than it was a year ago, but it's, it's, it's accessible for most people. The neighborhood business, the, the coffee place right here does, is recognized as reducing traffic and not increasing traffic. So people go there instead of going to Starbucks. They're, they live in the neighborhood, and they go there instead of driving away. So that's, that's been the, the common expectation now. This area right now, in times of environment, is a monoculture. There's nothing lives on it but wheat. And if it didn't, they'd probably want to kill it. So when we go in there, there's going to be birds, animals, all kinds of things that are going to start to live there and thrive there. It's also going to retain the water a lot better because on that surface, it just runs off. So retention, I think, is going to be deep, you know, our water, our water. So retention, I think, is going to be, you know, our water runoff is going to be decreased by this, not increased. Density preserves, this is not a real dense site, it's at the very low end of what density could be, this could be three times as dense, you know, by someone else's project. But density, I just want you to know, preserves open space. The sprawl that's happening out here on five and 10-acre lots, as you go out towards Moscow Mountain, is what destroys open space very quickly. So, anyway, we came at this, I mean, a lot of developers might have come in here and picked away at this by accretion, filled this whole thing. Responsibly, we wanted to go and say, this is the way it should be at the end, when it's finished, and start there, instead of just by accretion. So, yes, we are proposing that this is what it would look like, but I would suggest that that's probably responsible, and it would probably get there in the same way, just by accretion. But you don't see it, it's just, you know, every two years, somebody brings in a new addition and adds on to it. So, I just want to say that, you know, I think we've got a good plan that is going to preserve open space in the end. That's all.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing portion. With the concurrence of commission, I would like to declare a five-minute recess, so that we can take a quick break, and then we will reconvene. The atomic clock says 8:51, so we will start the meeting back up at, well, we'll take 8:57. So, we'll do five minutes, if that's okay. So, recess, and we'll see you back here in five minutes. So, I want to say thank you to all of you for your comments tonight, appreciate the time that you've taken to address us. We're going to open it for deliberation here in a minute. I have a couple of comments to make. I circled every time I heard water and traffic, and those were the two primary issues that I know you're concerned about. Water's a regional issue, and I'm hoping that we're going to be able to move forward, not just as a commission, but as a region and a community, to give us some tools, so that when we're evaluating these projects, we've got something to measure them against. One of the things that is a problem is, we kind of know the demand side, and we can infer how much water's going to be used every time we do one of these developments, but nobody can give us an answer on how much water is left. So, it leaves us in a difficult position. I think everybody up here is as concerned as all of you about the water issue. We just need the tools to be able to incorporate that, we don't have those tools yet.
Continue until you have your sound.
We're going to, we're going to have to resolve this as a region and as a community, council is going to have to become involved. I'm just saying that this body here doesn't have the tools right now to, every time we have one of these hearings, to say, well, this is the one that we can't, that we can't approve.
Do you have a pause button?
We don't, and that's part of the problem. So, and I don't want to reopen the public hearing, we've all had our say, and we're going to deliberate here. I would say that I share a number of the concerns about Slonecker, and I was glad that we had the clarification about where the construction traffic was going to go. In fact, it would be, and I will propose this as we get further into this, I believe that Slonecker should stay blocked off during construction of this project. I don't think we should have any traffic going up there. So, please. So, my support, or lack of support for the project, is definitely going to be contingent on that one condition. So, we'll get to that as we move through the proposals, I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. So, with that, I would open this to discussion by the commission.
I think the oldest guy on the deal will start.
Hey.
Now, since I'm older than I am...
I'm older, but I haven't been on here longer.
Let me, let me address one other quick thing, Joel, and then we'll get back to you. There was a comment during the public hearing about how to handle subdivisions, and I'm not sure if everybody was aware, but as a commission, we worked on a new subdivision ordinance for almost two years, and it made changes to incorporate for this kind of development that was probably a much more progressive, and, Nels, you can help me describe here, but this is exactly the kind of development that we were trying to change when we did this ordinance, and added in this type of things for subdivision. So, I did want to clarify that this is something that's been of great import for us, and, so, with that. Joel?
I might make a comment to back you up, to back up that comment. It incorporates elements like the small, having no front lawn, it will only be a very small area and be shrub. You share a common green space, that reduces water use, and that reduces runoff and all those, bad runoff, paved runoff. And it also incorporates different types of housing and blends them in here. It's almost, because we like to have our zones kind of be zone, an R1 next to an R2, it always, doesn't always work out one to two, but, you know, in that neighborhood, so that they blend, and this is kind of like doing it all within itself. And then has a nice blend to the outside subdivisions. And it does a lot of inner trails, and part of which are gravel, so it's not all grass, and it reduces the whole water usage, and when you have smaller lots, you are using less water, too. So, it's part of that cluster conservation, new subdivision, I can't speak to it as eloquently as some people on here can, but that was part of the intent of that new subdivision ordinance that we designed, was to make something that picked up more conservation and less water use and less negative impact. And this is very much along that line, very much along that line.
So, Joel, we cut you off, I apologize.
He needed to edit, anyway.
Well, I see many things in this proposal that I very much like. I do see the trails and the ultimate connectivity that should be there as the proposal is built out. I certainly agree with Rob's summary that the two issues that we have to face here are water and traffic, but I also agree with his conclusion about water, that the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't necessarily have very much, in a way, of tools to directly address water. It's something that needs to be comprehensively developed by the community in figuring out what we're going to do in conjunction with Pback and so on, at the level of council, to figure out how we're going to develop it. And I don't think that we're at a stage where we can say, you know, this is the development that is the, is the one that we have to veto, because it's above the limit. There is no such limit that we have developed, and we're not there, so. I'll at the moment quit by saying I see many things in this that I do like. I was, I won't quit quite yet, though. I would point out that, as myself, a resident of Orchard Avenue, that sending all the construction traffic north to Trail means that it's going to go west and down my street. So, the moving impacts around by closing streets and designating traffic in one way or the other, doesn't necessarily eliminate the traffic issue.
So, I probably owe the community a little apology, I just want to say that several, a couple months ago, when we had a development, I was a little bit rude, I, caught me off guard, and I apologize for that. I love this town as much as anybody here, and I'm, I've only been here 45 years, but it's my place, I'm going to die right here. Looking at this, and the, you know, again, I don't know what to say about the water thing, I'd like to start getting our new mayor and people talking about it a little bit more. We're probably not going to try and solve the water issue until we have a crisis, is my guess. We've chatted about it for years at Water Summits, but we never, we talk about putting rocks in our toilet, but we don't talk about finding new water. And, so, I don't know how that's going to go, but I do think we need to talk, we need, we need your help in getting together the right regional people to really try to let people down in Boise know that we need some help about trying to figure out a better, another solution for our, for our water. You're right, we're not going to be a big city, and we don't have water, and we don't have a lot of things that big cities tend to have, so I don't think that fear is out there. About this project, this kind of follows a sense of a new urbanism that's been in the country for 30, 40 years, and it, this probably is the most carefully laid-out and the most thoughtful subdivision that I've seen in my 25 years on P&amp;Z. And, gee, thanks, Mark, and so, it has aspects to it that we haven't tried. I'm not 100% sure that it's going to be just perfect... I'm not 100% sure that it's going to be just perfect, but it it responds. And we've been waiting, at least Joel and I have been waiting for the first little community businesses or someplace out on the edge of town. We've been wondering where that dot might be, and maybe this could be it. There's something to be said for that, and I think the variety of sizes here. Mind you, as I go by Solonaker, I've been driving up and down Solonaker. I hope I haven't been running into your children, but I've been on it.
Slow down. Can you slow down?
I've I've tried to be really slow, but it's such a beautiful street, and it is it is a wonderful development. It's probably out of my price range, but it and so I think we all would all agree that we don't want to use Solonaker as a construction roadway. And I was happy to hear that Mark had already thought of that. I think that's really that's really important. Will traffic increase for those of you out in this part of Moscow? Of course, it's going to increase. As we grow inch by inch, we haven't grown fat rapidly, not nearly as rapidly as Pullman. But the fact that Mr. Schweitzer decided to come to town and the fact that EMSI is here are some positive growth ideas that we can't ignore. We we can't say to those people they couldn't come here, and most of us were rather happy to see that. And that brings some change to us that we'll have to learn how to deal with. But I I do think this is exciting. We've seen lots, I've seen a lot of subdivisions in 25 years, quite a few. Not many in the last three or four years, mind you. The Third Street one that we talked about a couple of months ago has been on the books for 12 years. I mean, that wasn't a brand new thing, and probably so it was just going along. So, I'm I'm pretty excited about this, and I I do know that, of course, we're all going to have to figure out ways to minimize traffic, roundabouts and bumps in the road and what have you, that all the people in cities have done before us. I think we probably have to learn how to do that. But it just seems to me that the trail property has been the ideal piece of property that we're going to want to build on. You can almost count on it. David and I used to talk about that, and he was pretty insistent on dreaming that it wouldn't grow in his lifetime, and I guess it didn't. But I think this is a positive thing, and I would hope that you would be give it an opportunity and to see how it can develop. And so, I'm fairly positive, and I would recommend that we would approve it, but with protection for Solonaker for sure. Thank you.
Mike, Dennis, any comment?
I don't really have much. I mean, it it seems to fit. I mean, it's on the edge of town, and that's where we always grow, is the edge of town or in the middle of town we grow up. So, it just, it seems interesting. It's what we have been pushing for for the last, I don't know, a couple of years now to get something like this. I mean, it's not affordable housing, but it hopefully it will be affordable housing. I don't know. Yeah, I know. I think it looks good. I don't know about the the sidewalks on Mountain View. I don't know why we aren't doing that on Orchard. I don't know what what's the difference is, and the traffic is going to come down Orchard now, but it's not going down Solonaker. So, it's, I think that's something, I don't know, why is that, Mike? Why are they doing Mountain View and not Orchard? Why are they not like sidewalks and things?
Because this phase isn't connected to Orchard yet. So, at the time, the next phase, if this should go forward, the next phase connects to Orchard via Arborcrest, then we would recommend improvements be made to Orchard and Arborcrest in that area.
In that phase, are you going to pave anything over there? Arborcrest is gravel, and it's no sidewalks. Orchard doesn't have any sidewalks. You're talking about.
And there's a really steep hill where kids are coming and going to school. If there is heavy traffic from like construction, the traffic is really dangerous.
Yeah, that would be that would be my concern is on Orchard, just all the traffic and no sidewalk. But like you said, second phase, I guess it's going in there, and we'll just have to get through this first phase, I guess.
At the time, they make that connection, it's going to be staff's recommendation that some level of improvements be made to those streets to improve safety. I mean, once you get to where Lanny Lane comes in to Orchard intersection, it's fairly well improved as far as sidewalks and bike lanes from that point to the south. It's really north of that intersection. That's where it's deficient. So, we'll just have to look at it and address it at the time the subdivision connects to that area.
Okay. That's about all I had.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Well, I remember when Solonaker Drive was proposed, the big concern was who in whose name would build a road that comes out on that corner that everybody crashes on and you can't see. And there's a wonderful housing development that's in there now, and people, I hope, are learning how to handle that corner and handle the traffic. When we grow, there's going to be changes. We hope we can grow practically enough and address these changes and work through them and and work out compromises. But I I just remember when Solonaker was promoted to go in there, everybody said that'd be the dumbest thing you could do, is come out on that corner. Who who dreamed this up? And what a wonderful development that is. And people there, I hope, have learned, and I hope people slow down. We fight the same battle in the neighborhoods I live in. So, I like it. I like the looks of it. I like the blending of the different concepts. I love the fact that we don't have big front yards. We're not watering a lot of acreage. We have the green areas that are shared. I like the neighborhood propensities. To me, I just like the looks of the whole project.
Thank you. Scott, any thoughts?
Well, I I definitely agree that Solonaker should probably be closed until until it's through with the paving process. You know, my my neighbors are probably going to throw rocks at me because I live on Orchard. But I do have a little concern of that section on Orchard with the blind humps with no sidewalks. You know, I think the it makes sense to have the construction traffic down Orchard. Is is that a wider street, Mike, than Solonaker?
Orchard's a collector designation, so yes, the segment south of Lanny is widened, has bike lanes on both sides of the street, no parking.
But my concern is those two little humps with no sidewalk.
Yeah, I think our engineering department had looked at that before, and they may look drastic, but I think they meet code requirements for for roadways, so we'd certainly.
It is scary. Those those bunks, go just go drive.
Well, wait just a minute. Let him talk, okay?
Walk those roads. Just walk them.
So, we just have to assess that at the time, that the subdivision's connected to to Orchard and Arborcrest, so.
Please, please let us finish. Thank you.
I have more to say.
Okay, all right. Scott, thank you.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay, Victoria?
Okay, so I have a number of things I want to ask and say. I hear repeatedly references to the comp plan as the word used is conserving ag property. That does not mean that ag property cannot be developed. The city does not have the power to tell people who own land, you can't develop your land. We want to develop land responsibly and have things out there to try and do that. But that doesn't mean that no piece of land can get developed. And sometimes I feel like that's how people read it. The comp plan is a vision statement and a policy statement. It's fluid. It has to grow and change with the times and as the city changes, and it has to be responsive to that. It is not a stop statement. We just don't do anything. We don't do anything. It can't be that. Let me see if I want to make sure I catch. Oh, Mike typically, I do remember, and it was it was out by Moscow Building Supply, something to do with that area out there, they put in some houses or something. They did talk about those humps, and the study said the humps were okay. I'm not saying whether they are or not, but I do remember that that was looked at at one time. But I, who typically does do the traffic studies? Is it the city or is it the developer?
Well, the the city could certainly look at it, but typically it's the developer's responsibility, just like they've, in this circumstance, you know, contracted with DKS out of Portland to conduct the traffic study. And then the engineering department reviews that study to determine whether or not it's sufficient.
Okay, so the engineering department is represented here tonight. I I take it that they have properly done the traffic study, as it is their job to do it, and city has reviewed it?
That's correct. For this segment of this phase, what was looked at was essentially what comes down Solonaker and the intersections of F and Mountain and D and Mountain. Orchard is going to be used in the future, and so that wasn't looked at as part of the traffic impact study other than the anticipated volumes increase on Orchard. But the level of service at stopping stations was not looked at as part of this traffic impact study in the next phase that will be recommended.
What was the data of that study?
The traffic impact study. It was recently, this year, July 29th of 2021. I think what you're referring to is the data that was used for the study. The traffic count data was for those intersections. The oldest one was 2006 for, I believe it was F and Mountain View. That's the most recent data the city had for traffic counting. And that was essentially used and then projected at a 1% growth from that till 2021 to get a baseline. And then this development was compared against the baseline based on usage on the number of houses or dwellings and what the dwellings were.
Victoria, do you have some?
I have more things, yes. I'm not done. We have plans for Mountain View being expanded and the roundabout going in and all those things, right? That's going to happen, so that will help address the traffic. It was brought up, and if you're not aware of it.
Yeah, six, certainly six and Mountain View next year, a roundabout will be installed as well as a bridge at that intersection. And then Logos School is required to install a roundabout at the intersection out there by Mountain View Park and their school property. So, those are two roundabouts that'll be installed on Mountain View. They're also required to widen Mountain View in the county portion, pretty much from Solonaker to the 90-degree that heads north by Mountain View Park and provide pedestrian pedestrian facilities out to the school property from that location. So, those are planned.
Yeah, and and those happen, and it takes a while to get there, and you don't always know about it. So, I wanted to bring that up because that addresses some of your issues, too. I know I have more things here.
Is that supposed to happen?
Next year? Start next year, right?
Yeah, the six and Mountain View project has been, it was supposed to be installed this year, but our grant funding was pushed back to next year, so it'll be next year.
And when you think about roads, roads are not just access from your house to the corner. They are systems. They're infrastructure systems. You have a collection street going through here. You are going to get traffic coming increasingly use the road, but that's the purpose of the road. You keep it within limits, or you know, you design the road to to fit the limits, but it's going to start small and it's going to grow. But we all tend to, just like we think the parking space out in front of our house is ours, it's not. It's public parking. And yet, you need to think about roads a little more expansively. I don't have a car. You want to fix the problem? Get rid of cars, you know? I'm all for it, you know? My whole yard is wiescape. I'm on the Sustainable Environment Commission as well. I care a lot about water, but I have to deal with the practicalities and the legalities and the constraints that we have, and that's what part of planning is. It isn't just to put out stops and pauses, and you can't do anything. You try, you're going to have growth, and so you try to plan it as well as you can. As Nels said, this is a very well-planned project, and it should come to great fruition because I see no reason why it should fail. I also came here in here thinking Solonaker needed to be protected and that you needed to use trail road for this construction. But I'm kind of surprised we don't talk about it. Several of us seem to have already had that ideal in mind, as did you. And so, I want to acknowledge that, too. And I'm really happy that the property owners picked up on that themselves and went ahead and decided to do it that way. That is responsive. That's probably as much as I really need to say. We have to look at a broad view, and and I go to a lot of city meetings, and I'm on two commissions, and sometimes I really feel like I'm torn between the development side and the conservation side because of the two commissions I'm on. But you have to find a way to collaborate and a way to make things merge and work pretty well. You can't just take one side. You can't, and you don't get anywhere if you take one side. So, I want you to realize that we do, everybody up here cares about water a lot. You have a city council liaison person here tonight, and one of the reason why we have them here is so that they do reports to the council after every council meeting, and she's going to be reporting on what was what happened here. Not a long report, a short, you know, recap, a really short one. She's going to be saying, we're talking about water again. We got to keep talking about water because it's important, and we need to move a fire under that. But that's regional, and it involves a lot of partners. There's only so much we can do, and we can't do a whole lot about it. But we do care. And we do want to hear from you, and I thank you for that.
I think we're ready to proceed. Mike, a procedural question for you. Do you need each one of the the comp plan, the zoning designation, and the subdivision plat and the PUD separate motions? Or do you, can you, can we wrap these into one motion?
I prefer separate motions, but we can combine the reasoned statement motion at the end for all four of those actions.
Okay, and one other question. I I do want to make sure that we add the issue about Solonaker specifically. Should that go with the other conditions?
Correct, yeah, that'd go.
On the last, the preliminary plat portion of the.
Correct, yeah, I'd recommend those be added to the conditions on the preliminary plat.
Okay. All right, so we'll start, and again, I want to thank all of you that came out tonight and have spent the two and a half hours with us. We appreciate your comment. And I would say, keep being active about this and the water issue, and continue this discussion, not only with us, with council, with P-BAC. I I think continued activism activism is going to be an important thing with this. So, with that, would somebody like to move to recommend proposal of the proposed comprehensive plan, land use designations?
So moved.
Okay, so we have Dennis's motion. Do we have a second? Victoria's second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, move to the second, recommend the approval of the proposed rezone. No conditions on that again. Do we have a motion to approve the rezone?
So moved.
Nels' motion, and Dennis's second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? And abstentions. Okay. Next, the PUD approval. Again, no conditions on that.
I'll make a motion. We approve the PUD.
So, Dennis, move, and Mike, second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? And abstentions. Okay, we come to the last recommendation on the preliminary plat with conditions. There's two conditions recommended by engineering, as I recall. Is that where, that's where they are?
Correct.
And whatever motion we have, would like it to include the additional condition on Solonaker. So, do we have a?
So moved.
So, Victoria's motion and a second, and Dennis's second?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can we clarify the wording of that condition that you're adding on there?
Yes, thank you.
Can I suggest?
Please.
Some wording. "Access shall be restricted to the subject property from Slonaker Drive to emergency services access only until all required public infrastructure is completed in accordance with the approved development agreement."
Does that mean the bollards are gonna stay in? Can they get...
Whatever, however we choose to block that off is probably via gate, that those will be removed as soon as all the public infrastructure is completed for this phase.
Okay, is that, was that everybody's understanding?
And therefore, all the construction happens off a trail.
Yeah, all the, all the construction activity associated with the utilities, roadway, all the infrastructure, correct.
So just infrastructure, not the building of the houses? Just, just infrastructure?
Just the infrastructure.
I think my intention was that for the, all of the construction.
Yeah, but, you know, this could be a number of years, and that's still gonna remain blocked off is gonna be the concern. So you may not be, you know, when is that? Until every house is built and the whole phase, and you still have it blocked off? You know, we end up with a situation?
We're done with gravel trucks. We're done with, but cement trucks? I noticed cement trucks go by my house. Why do you let that happen? Yeah, I suspect that the cement truck still has to come some way. But question is, can we guide that?
Well, how are you gonna have everybody that lives in those houses use that temporary construction access off a trail road? Once they start building houses, there's people that live there that need access through the street.
I guess what I'm thinking is that, that it's construction access that I want to prohibit on Slonaker. And that would include after the infrastructure development. So, and if a house gets built, then there would be access for that house coming through Slonaker, but not construction.
But who's gonna control that? So if the gates open, it's a public street. Anybody can drive on a public street. There's no way to actually control the access without putting a gate or some type of bollards or block there.
I'd say this is a good compromise. I mean, what he's saying is true. I mean, you get one house there. That makes sense.
Okay, all right. So we'll go with that clarification. Are you in agreement with that? Is that okay with your motion? Okay. All right, so I guess we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. When, when we're done, why don't you get together with Mike? And we will, yeah, please. Okay, we've got one last issue. We need to recommend staff prepare the reasoned statement of criterion standards for all of... So do we have a motion for...
So moved.
Okay, and a second? Oh, we got Nell's second here, sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. All right. And if you'll, Mike's got the wording down. When, after the meeting's adjourned, if, we'll get together and sort that. All right, next item on the agenda, moving forward here, is approval of the reasoned statement of relevant criterion standards for the rezone replat and the PUD that we did at the last meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, deletions? All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Victoria's motion, Mike's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, and the next, did you get what you needed, Mike, on that? Okay. Joel, Transportation?
The Transportation Commission will be meeting in this room at 4:00 on the second Tuesday of the next month. And I have not seen an agenda yet.
Okay, staff's report. Thank you. Mike, any announcements, correspondence?
Nothing from staff, no.
Just for the upcoming meeting, the next meeting is September 8th. Just a reminder, I am not gonna be able to attend that meeting. So Dennis, if you would be so kind as to chair that meeting. Mike, do you have any previews for us for the agenda on that meeting?
I don't believe we have any applications for that meeting, no?
Good, okay. What's that?
We can do something else, either the 15-minute thing...
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about what we might be able